Hello, Echo. Hi, good evening, everyone. I think we've all had a chance to shake hands and say hello. I'm Michael Gahl. I'm your superintendent for the Colorado Springs School District 11. I'm excited to be here at the RJ Woson Academic Campus. I'll just do a couple of opening remarks on specifically why we're at Woson and what that means to District 11 and its vision. So first of all, if I could show a hands if you're a staff member. Right? You get a half a hand there. Thanks, Joe. Half a hand. Thanks. Great. Thank you for being a part of our team. What you do every day is critical to our success. Are you a parent? Parents? Awesome. Thank you. Well, I'm a parent too. My kids are all grown and not in school here, but as a parent, you become the customer. I ultimately believe that the student is our customer, but in many cases, parents will be the ones who can advocate for their students. And so having you here is critical to our understanding your needs in our system and for you to understand what direction that we're going. And I don't think we have any students in our gathering this evening. And if we did, I would certainly thank them most because we are all here solely for the students and for their future. Woson to me is one of my favorite campuses because we have this phrase that we use in central office called GST, which means getting stuff done. And what I love about the Woson campus is they get everything done at Woson. This is what I call a soups-to-nuts place in our district. They don't do any one thing. They do everything. We go all the way from early college opportunities where students are graduating with associate's degrees and certifications and career field opportunities, all the way to adult education that includes GED awards as well as ESL language opportunities. And I know there's not a lot of folks in the building right now, but if you come here through the course of a day, we have over 1,000 students assigned to this building. And so I am new back to Colorado Springs. And so when I was here in the late 80s and early 90s, Woson was a full comprehensive high school. And so I've heard people say, "Why did you close the Woson campus?" And the answer is, we didn't close the Woson campus. We just found the right fit for Woson and for what our family and our community needs. And so just a couple of things that I'll highlight here. The first is, I really want to talk about our CTE programming. The idea that our students are going to be prepared for life by just gaining a high school diploma is yesterday's thinking. Our students need to get their hands dirty, and I don't mean in the blue collar way. I just mean in having tactile experiences. So we're using the phraseology that high school, whatever high school you're in, is about finding your excellence through experience. How do we ensure that every one of our students gets a chance to try a career field or an area of interest on before they've got to commit tens of thousands of dollars in post-secondary education to figure out if that's where they want to be? So I'll use a couple of examples. We have a Future Educator Pathways program that's offered right here at Woson. What a great opportunity for students that are in our program who have such amount of respect and rapport with their teachers to be able to say, "I'm interested in the teaching profession." We can get them college credit while they're in high school. We can double down on the efforts of the state through programs like TREP and get their college pay for. We can start kids on a pathway to the middle class when they're in high school and give them an opportunity to explore that. "I thought I wanted to be a doctor till the first time I saw blood. Glad I didn't have to get all the way to medical school to figure that out." And having our kids be in those systems can be really an opportunity for them. And when we talk about some of these systems for CTE, it's not the old way that we've done CTE. We do employ CTE staff members who have very specific skills, but we also partner with other organizations that already have those skills. It makes no sense for us to try and replicate what's already happening in places like Pike's Peak State College and sometimes through distant learning opportunities that we can pipe students in to be able to get that experience. We're seeking to be disruptive on behalf of the student opportunity. We refuse to just do this the way that it's always been done because we know that our students need this differently than we've been able to do it before. The other thing I want to talk about the Woson campus is what we used to call alternative education. We now have renamed them Opportunity Academies. First of all, no student should ever feel that they are an alternative to something that means that they are not in the normal path. Every student now has a unique pathway to their own future, and to be able to exceed the potential of that future, we have to harness that earlier. I believe when I interviewed to come here, I looked at the numbers, and we continue to grow in the amount of success that students are having, particularly in our Opportunity Academies. This is a chance for us to not just offer our students that other opportunity to get to graduation, but for us to do it for El Paso County. We are located in the center of El Paso County, and we have the strongest Opportunity Academies in the system, whether we're talking about Bijou or Tesla or Digital or Achieve and any other way that we are finding that specific way for a student to reach and exceed their potential. We're doing it faster, smarter, stronger than other districts are in the region. I think there's an opportunity for us to corner the market there because many systems just continue to flush kids who don't fit the normal square hole right out of the system. And so it's an opportunity for us to really use Opportunity Academies, and Woson really has done that in a way that we should be very proud of. And they do it very specifically. The way that they have wraparound services for our students in the Opportunity Academies is this lesson for us to learn when we're talking about how we look at kids in the comprehensive high school experience. There's a couple of points about Opportunity Academies that I really want to focus on. Our students don't know the difference. Our students find a home and they celebrate our home. Some of the students that I meet, I will ask them, I'll use adult terminology, and I'll say, "Morgan," right? I'll say, "Morgan, where's your home high school?" Because if you live next to Coronado High School, you're supposed to tell me, even though you're attending Bijou, that your home high school is Coronado. But when I ask a student that and they tell me that they've been at Bijou for three and a half years, which means they're just a couple of months away from graduation, they tell me that their home school is Bijou because they don't see it as an alternative to where they were supposed to go by boundary. So I want to thank all the members of my team that have been working on the On Track to Graduate data dashboard that's allowing us to identify for students when that traditional comprehensive high school might not be the right fit. Any F on your report card, any 10 days' worth of suspension, any chronically absent student is an opportunity for us to ask, "John, are you happy here at Palmer? How are things going?" And maybe we find out that Palmer isn't the right fit for John, and then we know that we have these niche, very specific, strongly wrapped around and love opportunities in our Opportunity Academies to ensure that our students are successful. I'm not sure where you all grew up, but I knew where I grew up. If you didn't make it into high school, the next step in your traditional comprehensive high school, the next step was often a juvenile detention center. And we are able to increase our graduation rate by getting kids across in their fifth year, which is just an excellent opportunity for our kids. And so, and the last thing I just want to talk about, I squeezed it in there in the middle, was our adult education. We push over 600 adults and young people through the Adult Ed. Matter of fact, if you look out in the parking lot, many of the cars that are here right now are not the folks in the audience here. They're the folks that are attending Adult Ed opportunities, whether they be English as a second language, whether they be primary skills or secondary skills where they have a right to earn a GED or introductory skills to job opportunities. Our leadership team here, Melissa Burkhart-Shields, is a very strong partner with our Pike's Peak Workforce Development Center, and we see that there's a great opportunity for us to be able to marry individuals, adults in our community, who are seeking advanced education. We're asking ourselves a question right now. Most of our job requirements have a GED equivalency as an entry requirement. Why can't we offer some of our entry-level positions to adults that are in our Adult Ed and say, "Getting your GED is not a prerequisite, but it's something that we expect you to be doing in that first year or 18 months that you're in that employment." That's us solving two problems at once. One, we always have a staffing problem. And two, we know members of our community are always looking for work. And because we are a learned institution, this is the kind of place where we can get both those for the same opportunity. So that's what I want to say about Woson. I'm always happy to be here. I believe one of my first kickoff events was held here in this cafeteria with all the Woson staff, and they all had all the colors of all their different shirts with all their different logos, and it was a really exciting time. So I'm happy you all are here tonight, and I'll open it up for questions. Do we have a floater microphone? Yeah, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Hello in the back, by the way. I was shaking everybody's hand when they came in, and then there was a big stream of about 10 of you all that I didn't get a chance to say hello to. So thank you for being here. Somebody's got a question. Okay, Morgan. Thank you for being a role model for my earlier conversation.
You mentioned staffing issues. So one of the things that I would like you to address is some of our sports teams and bands and things like that are getting left at events for hours and hours and hours after their part has completed because they don't have a bus driver. So I was just at the band at a regional competition in Castle Rock where they were there for five hours after their performance ended and about two hours after the school was closed. So they made this, you know, the school was nice enough to accommodate them and give them a room and keep the school open, or they would have been out waiting in the cold for two hours. So there has to be, I know there's a bus driver shortage and there's not much that can be, I think there's probably more that can be done with that, but I think there should, could be some more creative ways to make sure our teams and bands and clubs aren't, I know the cross-country team was left in a park in Denver for five hours. So I think there should be some way to address that so that our teens aren't spending hours and hours in potentially unsafe situations.
Thank you for the question, and I'll start by saying you're right. That is completely unacceptable. Morgan's question on transportation is not a District 11 question. It's a nationwide question. So we do recognize that there is bus driver shortage. I applaud our transportation team this year for stretching themselves to the limit to be able to provide the transportation that they have. But this is the last year that we'll be in that spot. So we're working with the board right now on how do we increase salaries to make ourselves competitive in the region, number one. Number two, how do we continue to diversify our transportation portfolio that we're not limiting ourselves to just yellow buses? Many clubs or small sports groups will use activity buses because they don't require the same level of licensure for someone to be able to drive, and they're also a lot less expensive. This year, we were running about 60 or 65 bus drivers. And so if you get, you know, most people would plan on their workforce of any given day by having about 5% to 10% of absenteeism between sick days and/or vacation days. That would put us at the limit. We would then have to pull our administrative staff off of their desks to actually go drive routes. And of course, the first priority routes is to and from school. So the real pressure point has been in sports and in club activities. But we're confident with a very focused salary increase for bus drivers, number one. Number two, the diversification of that portfolio will give us more opportunities to provide the transportation that our students deserve. Nobody should be waiting five hours. Now, there may be a bus, you know, repair issue. You know, we've all been at the airport before. But predominantly speaking, most of us expect to be able to get somewhere within plus or minus a half an hour of the time that we thought we'd get there. So we're working hard on that. We will have a transportation update at the next work session, which is April 5th. So if you want to log on online and watch that, we'll have the transportation team there providing that update.
Do we have like a, like, you know, you have a substitute teacher database? Is there a substitute driver database we speak for trips for clubs and sports teams?
Yeah, and there is int, but we've been using our own staff as that substitute driver base. The limitation, just so folks understand, is that you need a CDL to be able to drive a yellow bus. And if you have a CDL, whatever any district will pay you to drive that bus pales in comparison to what you could make as a commercial driver's license, what CDL stands for. That means that you can drive a big rig, and you could go make all kinds of money driving for, and not the little trucks for Amazon, but like the big trucks going up and down I-25. Those people are making significantly more money, and any staffing questions that will come up will often root back to, "How do we try to provide value for people that are in 10s, 20s, 30% distant from the fair market value of that skill set?" Any teacher in the room right now knows that it is the most underpaid profession in America, yet it is the most critical to our nation's future. So I wish it were as simple as just write the check, but the checkbook, there's just, there's not that much in the ledger, so to speak. And so the answer there, I think, is a little bit of yes and, which is, we've thought more creatively, not sometimes just about the bus driver, but if I have an, we have activity buses, which you need to be certified to drive, but not at like the CDL level. And so sometimes the question will come up, "Maybe I get a substitute for the teacher to allow the one with the activity bus check on their license to be able to drive to pick the kids up." Like, I can't, you just said it was the girls' cross-country team?
I'm not sure which cross-country you might have served.
Right. My daughter ran cross-country, and I think all coaches included, you've got 10 or 12 people on that that would fit on an activity bus and wouldn't require all the licensure requirements of the CDL.
Our band has about 67.
Yeah, and the bands and things are a lot harder because they have equipment. Right. So the other thing that we've asked ourselves a harder question on, on transportation. Anybody here ever go to a regional event or a state-level event when they were a kid? Like, you get to go to the state playoff? Like, that is probably the pinnacle of your sports career. Now, maybe some of you went on to play in college or semi-pro or things like that. But for most kids, like, the Coronado soccer team was out on the Western Slope. That deserves a charter bus. If you're going to play at the state level for your sports team, we can't put kids on a yellow bus that doesn't have heat. You know, you're going to go represent the school district. And so we're trying to build that into the budget through our sports department and through our high schools that when we get to those special events, now we're not worried about our own inability to do it. There are partners out there who'd be willing to provide that transportation. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Virginia.
Hi, Virginia.
So I guess I had a, back to your CTE and how wonderful this is. It's such music to my ears, and my daughter is only in elementary school, so I'm looking forward to...
I gotta step away because I think I'm causing the feedback, but I want to get closer to be more personal.
It's okay. Thank you. So, for example, this, Woson is wonderful. There's a strong computer science program here, I believe. And our home school would be Palmer. Now, I am not 100% sure, but is Woson at capacity that therefore cannot accept any more students? Or what if, let's say, by the time my daughters in high school were slated to go to Palmer, we are up to capacity? Are there plans in the future to kind of buffer that if that is a strong interest for her?
So what I loved was the vision of future boards and community members who saw that Woson could serve as kind of a hub to what is our larger community. And so there's a little bit of yes, no, maybe so built in there. In a perfect world, every school has exactly what it needs. But we all know what the resource constraints are. We were just talking about salaries. When we talk about qualified individuals that we can actually hire into positions, especially in CTE because we have to have very specific skill sets, access to equipment. We're not talking about wood shop and auto hobby shop anymore. Computer, cyber-based training or IT training is very expensive on equipment and on the skill set of the individuals that we ask to teach those courses. And so without any restriction, the basic philosophy is, is a student ought to be able to explore a 100 or a 200-series course at their home school. I'm a freshman at any one of the comprehensive high schools. I ought to be able to go into a lab and tinker around on a computer and say, "Is this interesting or is this not interesting?" But if I get to the space that says, "I want to be in cybersecurity, and I want to work at NSA", there's no way we're ever going to have the resources to provide that in every one of the comprehensive high schools. So we have to determine, is there already an existing program? And if so, how do I get them there, right? We just talked about transportation. And if there isn't, how do I then house it in a central location to be able to get kids? Or does it exist in the city already? So I love that you asked on IT. We've met with and we're building a partnership with our friends at UCCS on the cybersecurity lab off of North Nevada. That is a world-class facility that, once again, if you drive by at any time during the day, the parking lot's not full. They would love to have high school students earning college-level certification and credits through a CTE program that just happens at UCCS, and now we just have to sign an MOU. I don't have to go buy, I don't have to go update 100 different computers. How do we partner with them to be able to do it? Now, there's logistics behind that. One, transportation. Two, how do we schedule our students? It's hard to find portability for students. It's very difficult to think in a traditional high school model, how do you get an hour and a half or two hours to really be able to go off-campus, get yourself unpacked, participate in a program, and then maybe get back to campus because maybe you're in the band or maybe you're on that cross-country team? So we're thinking through those challenges right now on how do we maximize resources from a student's perspective? Put the lens on the student. Anyone old enough to remember the original Wheel of Fortune, where you went shopping at the end of the game? And so you'd win $5,000 or $6,000. And then Vanna White's original job was to show you the showcase of which you could pick individual events. $500 for a sofa, $250 for the love seat. And when you got down to $100, Pat Sajak's would always say, "And we'll give that to you in a gift card." But that's how the show used to end. And so we're thinking more about the average of $10,000 that a student gets as the student's $10,000. I want to go to Mitchell High School, but I want to participate in a CTE program at either UCCS or here at Woson, which means I'm going to spend $7,500 of my dollars at Mitchell, but I'm going to spend that last quarter on these advanced CTE programs where I want to get the program that I want to get. That's a completely different way of thinking where this dollar belongs to the student and the family. Right now, all the dollars belong to the district, and we distribute it based upon where we believe people are going to go. We are a state of choice, whether we want to be or not. How do we get that choice all the way down to the student level? Right now, we're at a place where families are choosing, and they're making very clear signals to us on what they're choosing. We believe, and all the data out there shows us, that getting kids more opportunities to understand what a pathway is through an experiential program like CTE or an internship or an apprenticeship only broadens their options as they go. We want our children to finish 12th grade with multiple pathways to continue, not to be squirreled into isolation. Thank you.
You just kind of touched on apprenticeships and things like that for these kids to get into the trades. A lot of these apprenticeship programs mostly just require some type of math or they'll help you out with it, like electrical, mechanical, heating, air conditioning, you know, everything else, just pipe fitting. But what I'm wondering is, is if you touch base with these people that have these programs, maybe they'll be able to present something to these kids to get them interested in it because sometimes a college degree isn't everything as written. You can't get a job what you think you're going to get into, and you end up working, you know, bussing tables and stuff.
And are you in this, are you in the trade, sir?
Yeah, one of your electricians.
Great. Thank you so much for what you do. Lights are on, so I appreciate it. What was your name?
Chuck.
Chuck. Thank you, Chuck. So I'm going to go down memory lane a little bit. I've told this story before, so if you've heard it, please bear with me. I met, my sister's husband, my brother-in-law, he and I worked together at the grocery store in New Jersey. We worked at the A&amp;P. He was my boss in produce. And my funny story about that is he used to make me put those little price stickers on. He always had me putting them on the heads of lettuce, but they would never stay because that little sprayer thing would come out. You can't really put a sticker on a wet head of lettuce. Anyway, my sister ends up marrying the guy that I used to work for. So in my family, I'm the first one to go to college. I'm the first one to get a master's degree. I'm the first one to follow this very traditional path that we talk about now about college is the pathway to success. And don't get me wrong, I love my job. But I'm a retired Colonel. I work because I love my work, but I also work because I need to work. My brother-in-law, his father was a pipe fitter in the local. He went to trade school to be a pipe fitter. He retired four years ago. He lives on a golf course in Myrtle Beach. He just picked up golf when he retired, and he's already got a hole-in-one. So don't let anybody be confused that net worth and future potential is solely dependent upon the college that you attend. He has made himself and his family wildly successful by being a pipe fitter. So is there an opportunity for skills trade? Absolutely. We continue to explore with both local businesses and other trade schools to do it. I would say the biggest challenge we have is communication. How do we communicate to our students? How do we get their fingers into the system to see whether they like it or not? We've grown up into a society that does not want to value that in the same way that you've clearly articulated that it is value. Anybody here ever hang a door? If you can hang a door and make it true, I promise you, you should be able to get an A or a B in geometry class. Because the math that goes into actually hanging a door is a lot more complex than a lot of the math that'll be on the CMAS test to see what your learning objectives were met in geometry. So getting to this idea of competency-based demonstration of knowledge is a huge opportunity for us. I would love to know if you know of local businesses that would be willing to extend for apprenticeships and internships because we normally get stuck on, everybody sees it as an opportunity, but people don't actually extend the offer. So if you have them, I'd love for us to talk afterwards. Great. Thank you. Hi, Kathleen.
Hello. I have an infrastructure question. And I'm going to give a tiny bit of history because I've been here a while. I've been a teacher, I've been a parent, all of that. Back before the 2021, fall of 2021, the previous superintendent and board had developed with the, I don't know who you call the executive board, or the executive workers, the ones that, cabinet, thank you. They had developed a facilities master plan and an academic master plan and had invited community input on that. And it had to do with, how are we going to make this district work better? And that included some closing of schools and repurposing schools. Just sitting here, I'm looking up, and this is a building that was built in the 1950s. Okay, it was a beautiful campus. Still can be, I think, but it just, it, the, I worked at a school where I found out after I retired that the water pipes were unsafe. They had to close off several water fountains in classrooms due to unsafe pipes. So I haven't heard a lot with this new board or with the new cabinet about how we're addressing the real physical safety of within our buildings. What's happened to that facilities master plan? Are there some things that were brought up two years ago that can be incorporated into the new plan? Let's see, what was my other question? Just where are we going? The Mill Levy failed by a handful of votes in 2021. So what's the future? We've got kids in some decaying buildings. What are we going to do for them?
Thank you, Kathleen. For folks who are following or not following, the bond didn't pass a year and a half ago by 11 votes. So if you have followed my interview, I said, "Well, we actually lost that by at least 1,011 votes." Because getting 12 votes in favor and winning the bond by one vote is not the will of the community. That means every time we bring a shovel or a pickaxe out or a bulldozer, there's going to be a protest. Bonds should be passing at the 60-40, if not 70-30, level to show commitment of community to pay for the future investments of a district. I am very happy to have come to a district that already had an academic master plan of which we're building great depth into. So please, if you don't watch our board meetings and our work sessions, we have a series of documents that we've been sharing to communicate the movement on that. And we also had a facilities master plan. What I will tell you is that my observation, and I stated during my interview, is the two of them seem like they were in isolation. They were not in service of one another. And so we've been doing internal conversations, actually to bring to light something you mentioned. We do an RFP out for an updated facilities master plan. We also have a partner now who's bringing a new demographer study for us to understand what are the needs of the community post-COVID because our existing demographer study was pre-COVID. So we're trying to get a better understanding of what those future needs are going to be. But we're asking the facilities master plan to be in service of the academic master plan. but we're asking the facilities master plan to be in service of the academic master plan. What are the things that we believe need to happen academically? And then, how do we have our facilities master plan to support that? So, I will totally agree with you that we have decades' worth of deferred maintenance and buildings that are hanging on, as many public buildings are in America, not just within our district, that literally hang on every year and say, "Really glad that the boiler didn't go out," or "Really glad that the roof didn't fail." We have made very strong investments over the last several years that I will say we've been too humble for. We've had a very robust, or actually roof replacement project that's gone on. We've been adding air conditioning to schools that didn't have air conditioning. Many main, I'll just call them maintainers, many maintainers, facilities people just don't go around and talk about it. So, we need to communicate to the community what our actual needs will be for a new bond. Your board president's right here, and you can pressure to him, "Let's go for a bond this November," or "Let's go for a bond next November." We believe that there's momentum around the direction of the district to go back to our community, whether they have children in the system or not, to say that the value of a community is always centered in its public school system. We need a vision for the Colorado School Springs District, Colorado Springs School District 2050, not 2030, not 2035. This building was built in 1959. In 2059, it'll be 100 years old. Is this cafeteria going to still look like this? Are we still going to have all these wings? Are we going to have a semi-unused auditorium? Why, you know, and I'll ask, I'll ask rhetorical questions. I'm a, I'm a road biker, and so, on nice, warm weekends, I'll go east of town, and all there are windmill farms. As far as the eye can see, there's windmill farms. Why don't we turn the auditorium into a windmill farm CTE program where we're training our students to be repair people or design people in the wind or alternative energy industry? Those jobs pay significantly more than almost everybody in this room. That's a place where we can be investing. But that's what the FMP needs to do. It needs to be bold, and it needs to be brave, and it needs to vision. And so, one of the ideas I've brought to the table was, let's just say we, what was the last one? $380 million ask, $400 million? Let's just say it was a $500 million bond ask, and we said, "Here's $100 million for each one of the comprehensive high school clusters for that, those community members to decide how to spend that $100 million." You want a brand-new elementary school because you live on the west side of town, and you all vote for it? Great. You tell us which one you want. Somebody wants a middle school downtown? Great. You tell us what you want. My vision, and when you think about design, is I think about Palmer High School. I think about Palmer High School all the time because my daughter is an IB diploma graduate from the East Coast. The IB diploma graduate changed the vector of her life. She passed that test by one-eighth of a point, probably because her French teacher was reminding her to count, how to count to 10 before she had to take the French exam because my daughter was awful on the world language part of it. But now, my daughter finishes her doctorate next month because she learned how to learn. And if we could make Palmer High School the destination IB diploma school in the front range, what would that mean for how many kids? And so, I had a staff member at Palmer present to me their area of interest, and it doesn't matter which one it is, but it's an, it's a, it's a subject matter that's on the IB wheel. And they wanted to redo one area, and they said, "What if we made, when I made my area look like this?" And then, I said, "What if we built a whole brand-new IB, what if we built a brand-new Palmer High School that was built on the IB diploma wheel itself? And we made the center area, when you walk in, just reek of the theory of knowledge? What does it mean to be a critical thinker? What is the difference between truth and fact? What if we created a space that was designed around a program?" Right now, what we do is we shoehorn programs in the space. That's happening here all the time. All the time that happens here. It happens in every one of our buildings. Why? Because we're doing the best that we can. Like, nobody's wrong for that. I applaud everybody who comes up with a creative solution. I've been in Naomi's class at Midland, and I say all the time, "What's it going to take for us to build a breezeway at Midland?" We have a semi-covered outdoor pass that students have to walk through every day. We have to say that our children, our staff deserve better. So, I think the first thing is, we have to establish that we are a district that's here, that we are going to stay here, that we can stabilize our enrollment, and that we can show that we're growing and getting towards academic achievement goals. Because the other customer, who are the people who vote, particularly those who don't have kids in the system, who say, "Why do I want my taxes to raise?" When my mother, who passed away last year, said to me, "Why are my taxes going up in North Brunswick, New Jersey?" And I said, "Because your property value's going up because there's an awesome elementary school still down the street," which was the elementary school I attended back in the 70s. But even my own mother, while I was in public education, lost the connection between the value of the community is centered on the quality of the public school system that it serves. So, I would love to have you on our Bond Build Committee. You got it. Who, who are we, by the way, since you all came in as a big group?
We are the Level 5.
Level 5 English Second Language Learners Class.
Oh, great.
On Tuesday and Thursday nights.
We were just celebrating all the great things that happened on our adult ed and talked about our ESL. So, maybe everybody's understanding me or only some of the things I'm saying?
We're going to go find out.
We're going to go find out.
Yeah. So, we're doing a unit study on civic responsibility, and I saw this as an opportunity for us to come and experience a town hall meeting. And now, yeah, we'll go figure out if we understood anything.
Great. Well, it's a northeastern accent, not a southern accent. They'll get that part down. And what was your name?
Kim Crumpagel.
Kim, thanks so much for bringing everybody. Thank you all for being here. Okay. Going once? Going twice? Okay. We'll give one to our, let's give one to Joe here. I can follow up with Chuck afterwards.
Well, this, this question goes back to the Wausau as hub kind of thing. And I'm wondering what the projections are. I mean, I'm assuming that this has been planned out. What's the projection for, like, the percentage of the high school, the comprehensive school students that would be coming here or headed out to UCCS or Pike's Peak? So, that would be just a numbers kind of thing, but also, what if $7,500 stays per student in district, but UCCS gets $2,500? What is the, the cost for the overall budget on that? And, you know, how are you calking that as the district grows?
Yeah. Okay. So, a couple of pieces there. UCCS hasn't said they're going to charge us $2,500. That was me just fitting a piece in. I'm very confident that we can come to MOUs at almost no cost or low cost. My area superintendent, Scott Mendelsburg, has already done that on many of our higher ed dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment options. It keeps finding the cheapest way for our kids to get the opportunity. But, point being, right now, unfortunately, the impact is only in the dozens of kids. We have incredibly attractive CTE opportunities of which are not being utilized by our students. Now, I think that we'll have to ask that question in a couple of years. My strategy is, we need to be doubling that every year. We need to be having dozens of children in our future educator pathway. How many, Dwayne, do we have right now? How many seniors? Where are you? How many do we have? How many seniors roughly?
On campus, it's about a dozen. At Coronado, it's about 25.
Okay. So, there we are. We're in the dozens. It's hard for me to think that anyone who is interested in either social awareness or education opportunities isn't seeing the future educator pathway as a way to earn credits towards their graduation and give them some real hands-on skills that will prepare them whether they're a teacher or not. So, there's a lot on us to be able to develop that, but right now, the challenge of what we're trying to solve is, why do we have all this and it doesn't get used? So, one piece is we're finding that it's a, it's an access issue for kids. The second is it's a communications issue. Deborah Ashby's here, and if you haven't seen the work that we've done on our pathway schools in showing kids, giving them a visualization of what a pathway could be, we're doing the same things now on CTE, particularly in introducing CTE in middle school. If we can show kids, matter of fact, I won't remember where I was, but I had a young student say to me, oh, I was at a meeting at Holmes Elementary School, and the student, it was a sixth grader, said, "She really likes the culinary arts, but she hates her math class." And I said, "Well, aren't you using math when you're in the, in the home ec class?" And she said, "Yeah, but that's easy because I actually get to taste it at the end." And so, I said, "What's bigger, a dash or a pinch?" And she said, "Well, I think it kind of depends upon the size of your hand because a pinch is dependent upon what you can fit between your fingers, and a dash is what just comes out of the bottle itself." And so, I was thinking to myself, "This student doesn't need any help in math at all, but her grades say that she needs great help." So, really, it's part of a larger vision of, how do we go from didactic direct instruction, which is how most of our students start their elementary experience, and have every senior graduating with a competency-based demonstration of knowledge? Again, if you can hang a door, I'm pretty sure you're going to do okay in geometry. But our children don't see those connections. We have a very low engagement rate at high school. Our, we were going over this data with the board the last couple of weeks. Only 28% of our students feel engaged in their high school experience right now. A lot of that COVID? Absolutely. Not a doubt in my mind. I can't imagine what it would be like to be a senior who didn't really have a freshman or a sophomore year. That's a generation that will be impacted by that. But what we've seen in those numbers is in elementary school, you know, that, like little kids, you bounce them off the playground, they bounce right back up again. The numbers came up, we're out of the bathtub of COVID in elementary school. We're seeing that dissatisfaction line flatten at middle school, but in high school, it's still sloped down, and it's not trending in even a flattening or an up way. And our bet, or at least my bet and the vision that I'm hoping to bring to the district, is give kids more experience, finding your excellence through experience. When I hear kids, if, if you haven't watched School Spotlight last week from Coronado, we had students that were there from Karen Share Program, from the robotics program, and from the outdoor ed program that they do. Every one of those students spoke with a level of passion that I just don't normally get when I just pop into a fifth-period U.S. History class or, or an Algebra II class. Seeing kids have their learning come to life for them becomes a passion, and nobody's more passionate than children. I used to use this graphic that showed the stages of change, and I used a rocket because I, when I got my masters at UCCS, I got it in rockets. So, yes, I'm a rocket scientist. But the goal was, we have stages of change, and the end state was, the student is the satellite, and they're in a self-sustaining orbit of their own life. When a student knows what they want to do, you can't stop them. Can I, can I mention Jules? Jules comes up to me at Steel Elementary School when I'm visiting with the principal, comes running out of the library and says, "Why is it that we are throwing away all this stuff at lunchtime? This is horrible for our environment. It's not a good use of money." And so, I said, "Well, Jules, let's get some ROI." And the students built and worked with our food nutrition services to decide, was it biodegradable food service items or was it an in-house dishwasher? And the dishwasher's in yet or not, Chris? It's in. The dishwasher's in. It's the Jules and Willa, and Willa dishwasher for Steel Elementary School. There's nothing that's stopping those two young women. Getting them involved in solving a problem outside of just passing in a piece of paper is the secret for our kids to be able to, what I like to say is exceed their expectations. So, yes, we have more math to do. Right now, the number is so low that, matter of fact, if, again, if you watched the board meetings and the work sessions, three weeks ago when we did CTE and graduation requirements, the number that both Scott and Dwayne were presenting was, "We're going to double next year, and we're going to double the year after that." So, that's where we want to be on internships and apprenticeships. That's where we want to be in how deep we get in each one of these. And then, I think we'll be in a space where we'll be able to be more predictive on what those costs would be if we can ever actually get the system to, the student has a $10,000 check every year. Yeah. Great. Thank you. Which is a follow-on to, that I didn't even know that. Is that correct, Chris, that Halbert did the same thing? Did we buy a dishwasher for Halbert?
I was thinking.
Oh. Oh. Oh, the, yeah. Yep. But those experiences happening at an elementary school level are just huge. We're working hard to get CTE and/or pathways into the middle schools. I'll be leaving here to go to the DAC to make a recommendation to the DAC for our first-ever complete pre-K-12 pathway in the district. And so, we look forward to bringing that to the board next week. Okay. One more? I just, I'll get, go, go ahead.
How do you get parents involved? Because I, I see teachers, I see everybody else, I see a couple concerned parents, but in the end, don't you, doesn't everybody think that parents are just have to be involved in everything?
Yes.
And...
So, I'll just, is some of the, you know, high-order strategic ways we're thinking about that, which is, we know that there are multiple ways that people receive information. I've not been to a movie since I've been back to Colorado Springs, but I hear we have great commercials playing in the theater, thanks to Deborah and her team. I listen to one radio station versus another, but when I went across the dial, I heard a great radio ad for our pathways when our choice window was open. If you read, you can find things on the internet. We're, we're starting to think differently about how information goes. As far as parents go, from a structural way, we moved our partnership team, D11 Engage, underneath our communications department. Not because D11 Engage isn't already awesome, but how much more awesomer, thanks for all my English teachers out there, could it be if it had the power of everything that Deborah and her team are able to do? How about a QR C, a QR code every time you walk by a building that's on this little sign out there that tells you what all the courses are that are available? What are the pathways that are available? What if I go in there and I say, "I'm interested in the aviation sciences, and I thought it would have been at Wausau because of this hub idea that Goll keeps talking about." And then, it says to me, "No, no, no. Aviation Sciences is over at Mitchell." And I go, "Okay." And then, I, and then I get another link that says, "Oh, and at Mitchell, if you graduate from Mitchell in the next couple of years, you get to go to Pike's Peak State College for free as part of the, the Mitchell Promise in partnership with the Dakota Foundation." How about if all that just kind of flowed out of your phone? Anybody here on social media or ever buy on Amazon? If you buy something on Amazon, the next morning, when you log onto your phone, even if you're not on Amazon, ironically, your ads seem to look a lot like the thing that you were just looking at yesterday. How do we geomap and geofence our families, particularly those that are in our system? Anytime they're on our Wi-Fi, we know, "Oh, you're at Wausau. Let me push some adult ed opportunities for you to see if you're interested in that." We're getting to that space where we don't just tell what we do, we sell what we do. And the family has to be a part of that. But I think I'll end by saying, I won't wait for families. I'm also more than happy to go direct to students. So, those ideas I just gave you right now, I guarantee you students would gobble those up. Right? Somebody out there want to help me design a couple of TikTok programs? Like, let's get some messaging out there. Our kids will love that stuff. And again, because we own this Wi-Fi, we can direct the algorithm in. It's not, I'm not asking Verizon or somebody to give me access to, to cell phone data, but our kids log in, and they have their phones here all the time. So, they have their phones here all the time. Boom. Why don't we say, right before lunchtime, what's available for lunch in the cafeteria? Take a picture of the, you know, pizza. Make it look great. Kids love pizza. Sorry. Too simple. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'll hang around for a couple more minutes if anybody has any other questions, but the next town hall will be, the board will be hosting that, and that'll be a panel, board panel discussion on April 13th at 6 o'clock over at Mitchell High School. So, thanks for being here.